All right.
Now we got thumbs up at 6:06. Thank you and welcome to the August 20th, 2024 City of Angels State Council meeting. We're all coffee first.
Mayor Herndon.
Present.
Vice Mayor Moncada.
Present.
Councilmember Brolio.
Present.
Councilmember Shemante.
Present.
Councilmember Schirato.
Present.
Staff is present.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a vision justice for all.
Item six is report out of closed session. A direction was given to staff on both items A and B. Taking this to item seven, approval of the agenda as posted or amended. Any amendments to the agenda as it's been posted?
Steve.
No sir.
Any members of the public? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion.
Salute.
Second, is there a motion in the second row?
Shemante.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Moncada.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Schirato.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight is public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda, that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequently meaning agenda, and speakers will be limited to five minutes per person. Any public comment tonight? We don't want anyone with us on line, right?
Yeah.
Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll move on to item nine, which is our consent agenda. We have two items on consent. Any reason to pull either of those items?
That's faulty.
Any member of the public wanting to pull either of those items? Seeing that, I look for a motion to report on consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
For a motion? I'll second. I'm a second.
Shemante.
Aye.
Brolio.
Upstaying, I should have told it.
Moncada.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Schirato.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, item 10A, this is our regular agenda. We have our first public hearing. This is to introduce, waive the second reading, hold a public hearing and adopt ordinance 540, a new section. I'm sorry. And a new section 17.06230, establishing construction hours in.
Mayor, council members, this is the second reading. We introduced this at the last meeting. Briefly, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday would be construction hours. 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 on Saturdays, not on Sundays or the major holidays listed, with exceptions for extreme weather conditions and for public projects. Happy to answer your questions.
Question to see about it.
I just again want to compliment the planning commission on the work and your work on this. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this ordinance? Amy, did you talk about the advisory?
Yes.
Okay, so we have no public comment on this. They'd like to bring it back. Any other questions or comments from you, and then we'll close this public hearing. Listen. Okay, looking for a motion.
Salute.
Stand.
Shemante.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Moncada.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Schirato.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is also a public hearing. It is to introduce, waive the second reading and hold this public hearing and adopt ordinance 541. This is for changes to the Angels Municipal Code regarding small and large animal keeping, including increasing the number of fowl allowed per parcel, requiring fowl to be kept in adequately sized coops, requiring 10-foot setbacks from property lines for coops, prohibiting roosters, eliminating permit requirements, maintaining fowl in a clean and healthy environment. Changes will amend portions of section 17-09010, definitions 117170, public nuisance. It will add a new section 1706220 addressing small and large animal keeping, and it'll delete portions of section, existing code sections previously referenced they use. Wow, all those, 171803, okay, L 1713020C, 1713030D, and 1715020C and D. Amy.
Mayor, council members, it will take me less time to present this project than to read this project. Briefly, this came in response to some public comment. We've been through several iterations of this. This is the second reading. In summary, you get 12 chickens on a parcel, don't care what it's zoned unless it's R2 or R3, and you still get chickens on that if you only have a single family residence on the R2 or R3. No roosters and keep it clean. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any other clarification question? So, did you just talk about parcel size?
We eliminated that based upon a discussion. Yes.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing and see if we have any public comment or input on this item. Seeing none, we've closed the public hearing. Bring it back to council for final questions or comments.
I just appreciate the work, Amy, that you've done, and I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Shemante.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Moncada.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Schirato.
Aye, thank you.
No, I understand that, but just that there were different options. I just wanted to make it very clear as to which one were.
Well, it was that.
It's the one that we moved forward with. It was a hybrid.
Yep.
Or it was.
It was the one that you originally had.
It was the only addition being for R2 and R3, for single family residents. Perfect. Okay, we're going to move on to item C. This is the Rural Recreation and Tourism Program, Utica Park Lightner Mine Expansion update.
Okay, as you all see, new bathrooms came flying out of the air and landed in the park. They're getting a final inspection on Friday. We've approved the roofing colors and materials for the stage and pavilion through the planning commission, through a finding of architectural conformity. We've had three of our black walnut benches purchased.
How many are there?
There are 12.
That's everyone.
There is a frog that has arrived. For those of you who did not work on the playground, there is a giant frog that you climb all over, and we're all dying to see how the painting, the custom paint job on the frog turned out. Hopefully, we'll know that by the end of the week. We actually anticipate that filling in and pouring will be occurring next week. We hope that everything will be in the playground, tentatively by this time next month. There is a small possibility that we could have it open for children to play. What we want to do is finish doing the sidewalk around the outside and the low fence that's going to go around it, but then we will look at being able to put it back to the public for the kids to play in. The fencing is proceeding. Spider look it up, where Caltrans came through with flying colors. Thank you, Caltrans. And basically, Mark Twain is painted. He's going to have, the frogs are done, and those are going to be delivered soon. But again, we're going to hold putting it back in the park until we finish doing ground disturbance in that area. I'd be happy to answer any questions. He looks much better now.
He's not quite so great.
Although he actually did not look bad in the concrete. You could actually see the detail extremely well without painting on it.
Would you say that there's a likelihood, potential, that we could have a portion of this open for the playground? Is it just that section, or is it the bathrooms and the playground? What are your thoughts?
We should be able to use the bathrooms also.
Okay, so it would just be, we'd be able to fence, draw a fence line, and that's still under construction and this is available?
Yeah.
And is all the grass being replanted? Is it all?
Not yet. That's the last thing that will happen.
So it would be in its current state?
It would be in its current state, yeah. So the kids would not be playing there. They would be playing within that curve that was done for play.
The committee did a great job picking out equipment. I have to tell you. It's way cool.
There's more, well, they put up the panels today too that are customized for here. So it says things like 1860 brick and tile building and fun facts about frogs and stuff like that.
Any other questions? Any public comment on the park? Anybody? Okay, Mike.
Hi, my name is Mike Fish. But I got, I got some serious questions when you're referring to the park and you're removing money from certain projects that you have, approving the transfer of $300,000 from the.
That's the next one.
Oh, that's the next one?
Yeah.
This is just the update one, so item D will be the next one that we're happy to talk about.
Okay.
That's okay.
Good.
All right. Okay, so let's go ahead and move on from the update and move on to item D. This is consideration of a budget adjustment, transferring an additional $300,000 from the ARPA funds, $88,000 from water capital improvement funds, and $34,495 from the general funds to the Utica Park project. And then construction change order number two for the Utica project for Boyer Construction, totaling $422,000. Amy, I do have a question about the way that reads. The change order is not for 422. Everything above that line altogether is 422.
Well, we'll have to double check. While we get the, is there something I need to press? No, I'm going to press. Oh, you already got it. Yeah. Cool. Okay. All right.
Yeah, it's everything added up. It's not the change order. That was a little shocking when I first read that.
It's the title. Amy, she's questioning. I'm just trying to get that.
I'm sure we'll break it down.
Sorry about that. Okay, and so the question being, so there's the budget adjustments, and then there's the change order to Boyer. So the question is, the way I can, on the agenda.
If you want to go ahead and jump into the numbers of the options that you're presenting, it's going to prove itself.
Okay.
It was a little concerning that there was this giant change order for 400,000. That is not.
Okay. Okay, so that is a giant number, and I'm going to give you a couple additional options and also explain why there is a giant number there. You do not have to use that giant number. There are some options, but basically, oh, there we go, that works. So this is the entire budget as of about a month ago during our last update, and what we're really going to concentrate on is the Boyer construction item. As we discussed, this is a design-build process, which basically means that as we go along, they design, then they do a budget. If it doesn't mesh with our budget, we have to go back and make changes so that it does match our budget. What I wanted to emphasize here is, in this contract, the design costs, not the design engineering costs, but the actual initial design costs were all done for free by Boyer. So that wasn't an added cost that we normally would have had. But there's a bunch of reasons why we're asking for some budget amendments, and I'm mainly going through this because I really want the public to understand how we got here. Inflation. You'll hear me repeat the word inflation about 17 times. This grant, for those of you who are new, took three years to secure. Our first grant application was for nearly $5 million. Second one was for nearly $5 million. We finally got the third grant in 2022 for $3 million because it finally fit us. We were small and not extremely disadvantaged, so they finally gave us that grant. You'll notice that was about the time that we were going through COVID. The city uses something called the California Construction Cost Index every year to adjust our fees for building and planning. If you apply that same inflator to that $3 million grant, what we proposed in 2022 for $3 million would today cost $3,583,947 in 2023 dollars, not even 2024 dollars. You'll, you'll notice down at the bottom there, this doesn't have a little, oh, it does, it has a little red thing, but it won't show on the screen. That's bizarre. 2019, 2020, when we were doing this, it was 3.6 and 2.8. That was the inflation rate. COVID hit 2021, 13.4% increase. That's the year we came to you and said, hey, we're not going, going to go increasing our fees that much. That's just too much. So 2022 and 2023, both 9.3% increase in the cost of materials, delivery, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The most important thing we'll talk about tonight is we're asking for a budget adjustment because of safety options. So why didn't we think about that to begin with? Because we never intended to update the safety provisions at the park to meet today's current standards. You don't have to when you're in an historic district where the park was built in 1912. You can use the state historic building code and come up with an equivalent. So basically, what you're looking at on the screen right now, we could do without a budget increase, this configuration. That is basically the parking lot the way it is right now, but here's the key. You'd have to get rid of a whole bunch of parking spaces in order for the fire truck to be able to turn around at the end, because we are still having to do an equivalent to still be able to allow for emergency access, and that's how we would do it. In this case, the hard cords are right up against the existing parking area. Or we could do this configuration, and the parking area gets pushed out, the hard court gets pushed out. And what that means is, instead of having a hard court right up here by the stage, you have it pressed way out, and you have a fill line that comes clear onto here. So basically, you're adding fill from here all the way to here. And what that allows you to do is to come through here and drive all the way around with a fire truck. Instead of requiring it to turn around here and eliminating parking spaces, we actually end up gaining closer to about 20 parking spaces when we do this instead. Another add-on that we are doing with the safety option, it's right now, there's a bull bout right here. We're eliminating that bull bout. That winds the lane. That allows the fire truck to go through. So basically, what we did was, when we first saw the cost differential, we went. Then we all went out there, Steve, Nathan, I, we met with the engineers and everybody, and we said, whoa, why the big change in the cost? They went through it with us in great detail, talked about how much more it was going to cost to move the hard cords out further into the pit, what I call the pit, and I can get into more detail over exactly what that's going to cost. But Nathan, did you want to step in and talk about why you felt that this, all of us felt unanimously, this was a much superior way of addressing safety issues in the park than that first option?
Sure. Good evening. So I'll address the bull bout first, the one that comes in, and that's really where the bottleneck of that access driveway is. Even with the bull gone, we're not going to get to the 20 feet, which is what we would like. If it was new construction, that's what we would require for bull ingress of emergency equipment and to allow egress of people getting out. So Fire Code says 20 feet is what the number is to today. Even with the bull gone, we don't quite get to 20 feet, but we, there is a shoulder there, so it's close. With the bull there, it narrows down to like, that's not like 12, 14 feet. Where's that? So that's pretty tight for two vehicles to pass. So that was, my recommendation on the bull bout was to try and get it as wide as we could to, to make things better. On the circular, again, Fire Code says that the bull, the circle bull with the end, the turnaround, 90 feet is what is optimal. Now, we, I think what the engineer has drawn there is 80 feet, which we've calculated in our current leap, we'll be able to turn around in 80 feet. It's not ideal, but we could make it work. But one of my concerns is that even though you would have no parking at the end, we know from experience in these types of events, people park where they want to park. So that might not be 80 feet. It might be. They might all listen, but it might be diminished. The circular drive around is preferred. One, we don't have to, we don't have to worry about backing up if somebody's in the way. Parks at the end, you can just circle around. They would strike that area close to the amphitheater as no parking, fire lane. It would allow us a place to park too, should there be medical emergency, we could pull right close to where we would need to go. And like Amy said, I think it increases parking. I don't know how many slots, but, so that, that was the rationale behind that, was one, allow for a secured turnaround, increase parking, have a place where we could, we could park close to a potential emergency, and, and it definitely meets the turnaround requirements. I think that was.
No, is it?
Any questions, happy to answer.
Okay, so safety was sort of one of the main drivers, and then inflation didn't help us. One of the more minor issues that we encountered was, I call it compartmentalization. Basically, in this process, we have a process where one person did the request for proposals, and then a separate person did the contracting. So there were details in the RFP that did not necessarily get picked up in the contracting due to that separation. And then, of course, we had implementation of the project with a, yeah, a third person. And so there's sort of that division of labor, and it's good to have multiple people on a project, because then if somebody disappears, somebody can pick up. There are also a few little disadvantages, and I'll get into exactly what the cost factor of that is. And then the last one is, surprise, surprise, unanticipated discoveries. I'm not going to talk about geotech tonight, but basically, once you start digging, you find all sorts of fun stuff. I already mentioned perhaps that we found a whole bunch of abandoned sewer lines when we were putting in the bathrooms. We had to do a bunch of drilling into those old clay pipes and stuff to see if they were still functioning, or were they abandoned? Most of them were abandoned. The kitchen and the irrigation system, our landscaping system, we discovered are on the same line. So part of this park renovation is including making sure that the irrigation system and the kitchen are all going to be on separate lines, and you'll see that as a cost factor that enters into this. So we knew we were encountering some of these things. We knew that funding was going to be tight, so we have already, before we even started into this process, we raised 510, 382 in additional dollars, all grant funding and all the Angels Camp Community fund. Since then, and we have reported all of this to you, we've secured another 125, almost 126, with a little more coming. We've gotten donations from Mac Health, Adventist Health, Dignity Health, and later on in this session, we'll be talking about these 66,000 additional dollars of CBG money that we've gotten. There has been a contribution towards the interpretive signage, and we are still asking for even more additional contributions, and we do expect to get some of that. In addition to raising more money, we've had certain things eliminated from the plan. There's supposed to be a stairway that came down from Sam's Way. We decided we did not have to have that much cement. Concrete stairway from 49 in, we found an alternative surfacing material that we can use that doesn't require the concrete. Utica Lane widening, other than removing the bull bout, we could have moved that curve back further than it already is and eliminated some of the grassy area. We didn't really want to do that unless we had to, and it also was a cost saving if we didn't. So just getting rid of those things reduced costs by $158,000. So between the money we've raised, the money we've gotten reduced, basically, we've adjusted costs by almost $800,000. Now, because we're talking about using some of the ARPA funds, and those are funds we've been using for economic development, our current balance is $360,000 in ARPA funds. That's for getting the 400,000 you already allocated for cost overruns for the park. There's still 360,000. That is after taking out the frog bucks for this fiscal year. So basically, that's where we are. Now, of the 400,000 originally allocated, there's still 116,000. We already know there's cost overruns that are going to eat that up, so we didn't even play with that.
Wait, wait. So. I think you're getting off in the weeds a little bit, with all due respect. I'm trying to kind of follow along and understand what these overages are potentially going to cost without going into our, our finances.
It starts with the next slide.
Okay.
Okay. So what I'm going to give you are four budget options. The first one is if you are only concerned about the items that Nathan and I discussed about safety, and you add the hydrant that Nathan has recommended, it's not something we foresaw, but while you're in there redoing the water and everything, add a hydrant, and that includes all the labor. That also includes redoing things like making sure water lines that are going to the hydrant and water lines that are going to the kitchen and water lines going to irrigation, all that stuff's rolled into there. If you did a budget adjustment for 172, 145, taking 88,000 in capital and 84,145 in ARPA monies, you could select that as one option.
Can we use enterprise for all the water, the hydrant and?
Hydrant and drainage is what would be included in that capital enterprise 88,000 allocation.
Oh, so that's, okay, so that's coming from enterprise to offset that cost? Okay.
Yes, yeah. So of that 172, 145, 88,000 would be capital, 84,145 would be ARPA. That would leave you with a balance in your ARPA of 275, 855.
Where is the close, right?
No, I'm sorry.
Where is the closest hydrant? So this, this is why we're having a hydrant issue? Is there now a hydrant that ever been down there, near there?
Good question. So where the bull bout is, that's behind the old bathrooms, there is a hydrant there.
Okay.
And we could, we could survive with that. But my thought is that, as we already have to open it up for the water line to go to the kitchen, and we have additional structures being pushed farther to the north and potential additional development further north, now is the perfect time, while you have it open, to do this. Could we survive without it? Yeah, we could, but I, I think this is the right time so that we don't get down the road and go, man, we really wish we would have done that when we had it open and available to us.
And on the 42, what does that get you with this? I mean, what's the improvement on the hydrant? Is it pressure or is it accessibility or is it?
It's a brand new hydrant to the north located near the kitchen and.
Oh, I see. It's an additional.
It's an additional. So they're extending the, I think it's a six-inch line from where the old bathrooms are to the northeast and over by the kitchen amphitheater would be a, a new hydrant.
So if we simply don't put us a new hydrant. So if we simply don't put us a new hydrant, is that 43,000 go away, or we still need to spend that money for all the relocating of the pipes and then running the new water lines?
No. You could get rid of the hydrant, but again, it's what Nathan said, doing it later versus doing it now. You pay more down the road, you pay less.
So that hydrant would serve basically that whole back end of the park?
So we're looking way forward down the road.
But you could use that hydrant at the bulb to hose out all the way out there if you needed to.
To some, yeah. We, yeah. We can't reach all the way up mid canyon, but, correct.
Trying to think of the hydrants up on the main.
Okay, so that's the first option. Safety is your thing.
So when you go back, this added fill, adding drainage, remove bulb, that's for that scenario where they can turn the fire truck around?
It's for that scenario right there.
This, that scenario?
Yes. And it's, if you don't want to do it, then this is the scenario we would have to go with. You don't want that budget adjustment, we have to go with this scenario.
And what is the green? Is the green the amphitheater?
That's the amphitheater.
That's the hard court, and it's just kind of...
And we would be losing that parking, because there is parking along that side.
Yes. We would be losing parking, and so that's what you're buying. And could we stay completely in budget and not do it? Yeah. But do we really want, you know, that's...
Can we do it at a later date?
So that's the perfect question. Once you put that hard court there, you're not going to be able, you'd have to tear out the hard court to do it at a later date.
It would be the cost.
And the cost value would be probably more expensive.
Couldn't we put the hard court where it's slated to be right here, and then do the parking, you know, complete the parking with a future contractor?
The main cost of this is moving that hard court out to where you see it. That is the fill, yeah. And, yeah, that's what's causing it. Yeah, the parking lot is where you're already going to have to go that far out to put the hard court where that parking is, but you would be getting rid of parking. And then to just put the hard court out there, once you put the hard court out there, this is the one you want to go with. The cost difference is hardly, there's not that much. It's paving the parking area.
So Amy, we have approximately $100,000 left, but you said those dollars you think will already be allocated?
Those are already things we anticipate cost overruns or underruns, or we knew we were going to have some cost overruns. And that's going to be absorbed already.
That's $116,000 that we have left. Oh, right, that's the money we had.
Okay.
So again, that's, this is the safety option. Any other questions on that? Okay. Now, for those, seeing different people to do different things, what fell through the cracks? The answer is $76,500 worth of items, which included the drinking fountains, a fire access road, an electrical vehicle charging infrastructure, and light poles. And if you wanted to do that plus those grant requirements, you would then be looking at an adjustment of 248, 645. If you wanted to take it all out of ARPA, it would leave you with 160, 645 in ARPA, 88, keep staying there in capital.
So the county's going to provide the charging station, correct? One charging station? Now they're not?
Not there. Where they're going to provide it is up at NAPA, and here's the thing that we're going through. And so that's why that's sort of a flexible item, if you will. We prepared this grant application long before there was an electrical vehicle charging station plan. So we committed to having one electrical vehicle charging station in the park. That doesn't even pay for the whole charging station. That pays for getting all the infrastructure to a parking spot, so that then we can pick somebody and get a charging station there. We have reached out to Tesla, those kind of people, to say, hey, you want to donate a charging station? We have not heard back from them. Could that go away? Maybe. We've also approached the state and said, hey, we're getting ready to put in an electrical vehicle charging station right here. Anyway, we can not have to do that. So...
So we can't move the one by NAPA down?
Well, there's going to be a couple at NAPA.
A couple.
But does potentially count as the EV chargers?
We will ask the state that. We don't have an answer for that. Do you want to add anything to that, Steve?
Yeah, I'm just getting into the, so that discussion will occur at the Cog meetings, and there is one this month. So my understanding of those charging stations, there were some initial locations throughout the city that were determined where those charging stations would go. That initial placement has changed to something else, and that something else includes the old NAPA building. But that whole project is related to city vehicle and transitioning the city vehicles to electric vehicles, not necessarily for the public. So it would have to be a discussion that I would have to have with Cog as to whether, is it exclusively city vehicles? Could we possibly transition the location that has been determined at NAPA to be down at the park? And if so, can that charger be used for public vehicles? Or is it just city? And I don't have the answer.
My notes say charging and fuel grants, EV chargers, $1.3 billion in grant money going out due August 28th. So, awesome.
And it's all throughout the camp. And we have two locations planned, so I have lots of questions when I attend the next Cog meeting.
So I'd like to explore allowing them to charge at NAPA and not putting one there.
Sure, understood, and we already are doing that. Light poles, that seems like a lot. Basically, when Boyer proposed on this, they were not thinking of matching the light poles that are currently there that PGE already has in the park. To match the light poles that are currently there, that's what that's for. They already have doing all the electrical and getting the electric and everything, but that was to purchase and add light poles. Have we asked PGE if they'd like to donate light poles? Yes, we have. Have we heard back from them yet? No, we have not.
So on the light poles, they just don't match. There's light poles already existing that Boyer put in the plans. They just don't match what's existing.
Yeah, yeah. So we would have way different looking lights. And we would have things like lights along walkways as opposed to big old streetlight kind of things. That's what they envisioned when they did their cost proposal.
But you're saying that they're a design build contractor, so they designed something that wasn't satisfactory to us, but we don't have the freedom to change it without being a substantial 30?
Well, that's the whole thing. That's where we are now. We're now in the, this is what it would cost based upon if we need this in the design, and if we go back and we say, hey, we don't need this in the design, they will take it out, and this cost will not be in there to use the same light poles. That's part of the design build back and forth.
And there's enough light for health and safety down there. I mean, with existing, in the existing set of plans for the park, the lights that have been specced out are enough for health and safety.
Especially, they should, yes, because we do not anticipate night activities.
Right, what kind of the park closed? Like, we sense that's just...
Exactly.
I mean, when farmer's market, if farmer's market moves back there, those are the kinds of things we'll be up against. It's just the timings of those and having to save light for people to get back to their cars. But there's lights even in the middle of the park, right?
Yes.
For the concrete...
Basically, so in the center, there's like six or eight, yeah.
So how many extra light poles? Because just out of curiosity, I mean, let's say there was 10 already down there. Are they adding two more for 30? Where, or, because there's already lights in the pavilion, there's lights?
You know, I do not know that number. I will have to find out. For some reason, I have it stuck in my brain, it's six, but I could be nuts. Then, on the drinking fountains, those were things that should have been included. Those were not, that was one of those extras that did not get passed along.
They're not in the contract, or they're not on the plan?
They are not, we don't have the plans to the level where they show us where drinking fountains are. They are also not in the contract, but they have to put them in the plans. That's the key. So you never put in the contract.
You mentioned someone did the RFP, and then someone else did the contract.
Yes.
Was that on us?
Yes, and something we can improve on next time and not have that happen again, so that these kinds of things do not. These are the things that fell through the cracks. I don't know how, I'd like to lie to you and tell you we were great and thought of everything. No. These are the things that fell through the cracks.
And not just because we, I guess my question is, why did they fall through the cracks?
Because we had different people. One person was over here who did this, and then that person's no longer working on the project. Somebody else comes in new, takes over, doesn't have the background, and goes forward with the project.
So that's the underground, 24,000, is the underground, the underwater lines and hydration stations?
Yes, because the hydration stations themselves are $6,800 each. So that's for all the labor, running the lines, et cetera, et cetera.
And we have a drinking fountain down there now, correct?
It's being removed. Because of its location, it was sort of, it's...
Doesn't IMWR, that's background, right? They give out grants for like hydration stations and those types of things. So I would check in with them to see if they've got some extra ones. 24,000 is not that much, and they may have like 300,000 sitting around for hydration stations.
Perfect. I will pass the red line. So again, these are things that when we're all said and done with this grant, which has to be done by 2028, these are the items that they'll be looking to check off the boxes on, and these are, we have to do these in some shape or form. Now, we do have to have a hydration station, but, you know, maybe it's a less expensive one. Maybe we've gotten money from IWRP. Maybe we've gotten something for an EV charging station from somebody who's contributed it.
What's a fire access road?
So basically, what we have is, when the O'Reilly fire was happening, one of the things that we did was we drove up our sewer line. And so what we're trying to do is leave it open, and then they will do some rocking and stuff here, so that you can still drive up that. Now, can we combine that with the trail system? Yeah, probably can.
Yeah.
Yeah. So...
And so to have a hydrant at that end, Nate, would be beneficial, because then you could pull from that hydrant if you had to go down that fire access road.
It definitely would be beneficial. And my thought was, it would be beneficial when we have it open, and now's the time to do it. If we want to do it later, that's an option too.
So you guys, like, where in this parking lot, do you assume that the hydrant's going to be someplace by the amphitheater back there?
Yeah, there's some, there's some no parking area that's located near the amphitheater and kitchen. That would be a good location, where we wouldn't eliminate any more parking to allow access to the hydrant. It's already blocked off, has no parking, was the thought. And it's pretty much a straight run from where the water line is now to that location.
Amy, this is an off the comment, but since we're talking about parking, somebody's going to design a parking and make sure that our handicap parking is legally compliant, so the grades are the same, and we have truncated domes and all of that, correct? With access?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So, so this is one of the difficult slides, because things are a little bit in flux on this. But just to put it out there, if today we wanted to be 100% sure that we'd be able to fund everything as we currently anticipate it will be, that's the price tag, that 248, 645.
But if we only went with option two and didn't do option one, the total would just be 76.
Right.
Of the required things that we have to remove.
Again, the required things, 76, 500, the safety one being 172, 145. And then putting both option one and option two together gives you the grand total of 248, 645.
So the question I have is, your update says we have $100,000 budget remaining. We have $100,000 of funds remaining in the Utica. So why is this 76, 5 not coming off of that $100,000? Because these are obligated by grant items.
I could have done it that way. I could have done it that way, but I know also that the gym equipment is also required. So I could have pulled the 116 towards this, and I could have put the gym equipment up there, and I could have put a different price for the gym equipment. I could have done that.
So where's the gym equipment?
Gym equipment is not there.
Is that missing?
No, 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 no. I just was assuming that would be part of the cost overruns, because it's a required item. Whereas this gives you more flexibility to plan the budget.
So Amy, where are we in terms of timeline? I think we've given some suggestions for you to go back and look at. Do we have time for you to see whether or not we can get the hydration stations funded, whether or not the EV charging station can be moved? You know, the light poles, the fire access road only makes sense to me. I mean, that, to me, that's going to protect homes.
Well, it can be dual purpose.
It can be dual purpose too, especially if we use it.
On the light poles, is this a required item? Lighting, but not those light poles?
Okay, gotcha. So we...
This is just a design change. It's better looking light pole this, that you...
That was actually existing.
Right. So let me finish up the last two, because you thought we were through the easy part, but no, we can make it much more difficult. If we were to add one more thing from a bunch of optionals, we are looking at rerouting everything. We would like to. We do not have to. We wanted it all to match with metal. If you were to choose one item from that optional list, I would recommend considering doing the kitchen roof, because it's the only thing we actively heat and cool, and this is an energy-saving roof that would in fact pay some good dividends for us if we were to install. And that is 59,925.
But that can also be done later.
Yeah.
It can be done later, yes. And then lastly...
Rick, can you go back and say it's 15 minutes?
Amy's going to get to that 420,000, that's what she's working on.
I think he did there. I think he wanted to spend it, is what he wanted to do.
Well, no, I want to give you the, I don't want to surprise you with something. I want you to know everything that could possibly come up. And then if you wanted to do things like doggy pots, or wainscoting around, rock wainscoting around the stage, do the entire bathroom and kitchen exterior, all that other stuff, that's going to be a grand total of an additional like 269, bringing the grand, grand, grand total to, I can't even see that anymore, 577-ish it looks like here. And that doesn't even include the splash pad, I didn't forget that. But I mean, if you were just to go hog wild and include every, every, every other thing, that's what you would end up with. And just as a note to finish, if our budget had been adjusted for inflation, and we included absolutely everything I've talked about tonight, we would still have $6,132 left if it weren't for inflation. But alas, we don't. We have the 577, can't even read it, 813. So which budgets would you like me to go back to, and what questions might you have?
So Amy, are there slides that, because in the past, we talked a lot about stuff that we could do just for aesthetics?
Yes.
You know, and I think aesthetics can be done anytime.
Correct.
So, I mean, if we...
We can always budget for this in the future.
In the future, yeah.
If it's a priority.
So the biggest priority from a design, don't make everybody stop and wait, is this item right here.
Because of timing?
Because of timing. If I get a thumbs up on this, I'm not going to keep it. They know to do that extra fill. They know, well, we'd like to know about the hydrant if you could make that decision. If you also wanted to make a decision about the room, that's fine also. But this is the most critical item. Can we come back, or we have a better feel for whether or not someone's going to come through on these? Yes. Can we do this later? Yes. Do we have to do all those? No. But what I'm telling you is, this item right here is the most critical to moving forward. If we don't get a thumbs up or a thumbs down tonight, we will have to delay moving forward on that part of the project.
So Amy, if we don't do this, adding the paving and drainage, et cetera, et cetera, I don't understand, Nate, what happens in that parking lot then? Nobody can park there, because at some point, you love to turn the fire truck around there? So there would, there would be no parking in the back of that?
Yeah, if you go back to that slide.
Can you go back and just help me understand that? Oops, one slide.
So...
Yeah, and Amy, Kay's going to like, be able to get that eighty-foot diameter?
In order to have this, so the fire truck can turn around, you're going to eliminate all of these parking spaces. That's that simple.
And we're adding an amphitheater?
Right.
And taking away...
No, this is a, this is only expansion. This is for the...
No, what she's saying is you're slowly...
You're adding more traction.
And distraction is taking away parking.
Right. Which is one of the reasons we bought now the, and the adjacent parts of it.
You also, Amy, in the, in the material, the backup, you, you talked about the, the business trail and, and things. Is it, and you said that you've already received like forty thousand dollars for it, and there's, but it's a total of a hundred and sixty to put that park course in?
That's, that's not the park course, that is the outdoor gym.
Oh, the outdoor gym, okay, okay.
And I used that because it was a single thing. Um, I could have used all those other things that were on that other side.
Now, the outdoor gym is going to go where?
It goes immediately adjacent to the playground.
Oh, okay, so it's that equipment?
Yes.
It's not scattered throughout the trail.
No, that's the park course.
Okay, gotcha.
And that's the park course.
Park course is very flexible. It's, it's like what's out at Columbia. You can have two stations, or you can have five stations, you can have ten stations. The outdoor gym, that's what all of the health organizations wanted to contribute to. In fact, one of them wanted to contribute one hundred percent and went back to corporate, and we were disappointed. They felt very strong that they'd be able to, but they were not.
Okay, I'm going to take a pause real quick, and I'm going to open it up for public comment. I'll say that you received public comment on this item, and then we'll bring you back for deliberation.
I'm Scott Beagle. I came up with quite a few questions on this. You guys had a great drama discussion answering almost all of them. Uh, my only comment is going to address the fire hydrant deal. I, I totally get putting in, well, you got the ground, you got it open there, and it'd be less expensive to do it now. My only question would be, what further development is being anticipated? What will the scope of that be? So if, if the scope is so much that a fire hydrant would be that beneficial, then perhaps that would be a new grant with new monies for a fire hydrant with, and, and, and is this location we're talking about putting, is that the right location for that future development? With so many uncertainties on the future, um, do we really want to plant, uh, you know, a stationary object? So that's my question.
Mike Fish, but the, the fire hydrant to me is the most important thing. Because if they have to straighten the hose from all the way back down there at that one spot, that's a long ways to go, am I correct, Nate?
Yeah, it, it's over twenty-five feet, what spacing generally is.
Correct, so that would put you within the realm of what you need.
Correct.
To work on that hill, if you had to work on that hill. So me, personally, that would be the most economical thing to do, would be that. Because you already have the ground open and everything else, so you might as well do that. The rest of the stuff, I just, I have a hard time with it, because you're robbing Peter to pay Paul on this stuff, and it's not right. You know, you're taking from multiple different things to get this money allocated for this. Fire is the most, fire and safety is the most important thing. Your lights, I would say, go with what originally was on there. And a lot of that other stuff, you know, the stairways and stuff like Amy was saying, you know, that's stuff that's can be done later. Or can another grant be brought up at this time, or another time, to bring this stuff up to date where you need more of that? The whole, my whole question is, is, and Amy answered most of this, is when you're doing these plans, you have one person, you know, that was there, one person wasn't there, but who is the overseer of all of this? You know, I mean, there has to be a certain person that's overseeing all of this. You can't just say, okay, well, this one, not here, and this and that. There has to be a final set of drawings that has to be done on this. And like I said, I've done multi-million, multi-billion dollar jobs, and if I did that, something like this, it would not be, not be a pleasant thing. I wouldn't have had a job. So this is what I'm saying, you guys, you guys really need to pay attention to this, whoever's doing these, really needs to be paying attention to this, because this is costing everybody money. You know, it's not just costing this and that. That's a lot of money that you're dealing with. But me personally, that fire hydrant needs to be put over there in the right location where it needs to be. Don't rob Peter to pay Paul and then cut yourself short on other pieces. You know, I mean, Boyer's original bid was like two hundred and twenty thousand, or two hundred, two mil, two and a half million, or two and a quarter million. Now he's up to two point eight million if all of this was to pass. That's a lot of money. That's six hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, six hundred and sixteen thousand dollar difference in money. You know, if all of this was to pass. That's a big chunk of money. You know, I, I crunched a lot of numbers, and I've done a lot of things, but this is not a way to do business, in my personal opinion. But for that, I would say, I would definitely do the hydrant, and not even hesitate about that one, because it will benefit the fire department and everything else. And the way that plan sits right there would be the best way to go, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment with anyone that's joined us online, Rose? No, great. I'll throw the public comment and bring you back for further discussion. Um, go ahead and turn your lights on when you need the chance to talk, and I'll... And you will start gathering thoughts here and coming up with solutions. I think the one thing that might be helpful for me, Amy, is can you, I know we have a lot of options, but can you bring up what our obligations are versus what is our wish list versus, we're going to have to break it down in, in that format for me, and I don't know if you want it that way.
So, um, between this one and that one, those are our obligations, seventy-six, five. And that's what we would like to do in addition to the obligations, the one seventy-two, one forty-five.
Do we have an option, if you go back to the sketches, that, that one, no, sorry, nope, that one? That's, that's free. Let's call that the free option. That's, we're currently contracted...
Without a hydrant.
Right, what would it be? Would it be the fifty thousand to add the hydrant on there?
Maybe forty-three thousand to add the hydrant.
Put no additional parking.
Yeah, that's...
And you lose parking. And you lose parking.
Correct. And you're also dealing with traffic control as well, because...
There's no flow.
And houses, because people will start parking everywhere. My concern is that this is going to start getting out of control. And every meeting, we're going to have a new theme that's going to come, and be a new overage, and a new wish list, and a new something that happened, and it's going to completely spin out of control. Right, because with the ARPA money and the overage money that we budgeted, and the ARPA money, which is not really designated to anything right now, Mike just wanted to let me, like, right, that, that money is not. So, you know, you've got four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars right there. But then after that, what? Like, we don't have an endless amount of pot of money that, that we haven't even gotten into some of the other construction of the amphitheater, and the hardcore, and all that other stuff. So I'm just, I'm very concerned about where this is going.
I understand.
Can you flip to the next slide for me?
The slide that was in, this one or this one?
Keep going, there's option one, I want option two. Yep, option two. Because that, that's a, we have to requirement, right?
Except for we don't actually on the light poles. We have options, right?
Right.
And we're trying to see if we can count the EV charging station a bit so that, and if we can get some money...
The only thing I can think of is that if there's light poles that are required, I mean, you could stub up for them in the ground and leave it there. You don't have to buy, but my only concern is when the dirt's open, it's a heck of a lot easier.
Right. Running all the, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to buy a light pole, but maybe you put...
Chases in and...
Yes. Uh, the fire access road could play into...
The trail.
The trail path going up, correct? And instead of an eight foot, you need a fifteen foot, so I, I don't know if that's, and the drinking fountains, it's all...
So do we need to... How is the access road that much less than the drinking fountain?
Do you have to have a hydration station, is my question? Or can it just be a regular old turn the knob?
Mostly they're all together.
It does have to be a hydration station.
Right.
Under the grant. And in answer to your question, Caroline, I, I get that absolutely. Um, that's why in your packet, we have them put everything down, every single item. We even said, and if we got these things passed, would you be willing to do a fixed fee and never go over? And commit to pay that? And they were open to that.
So if we do option one and option two, it leaves us in the ARPA money, and we set four hundred thousand aside for, that leaves us roughly two hundred thousand for any other overages we have without touching option three or four.
I, I still like, Amy, to explore whether or not we can cut down on some of those required items.
So can we revisit this one?
Yeah. But you know, Amy, I, I, I appreciate, it takes a lot of intestinal fortitude to sit up there and, and present all of these plans, but it's better for us to beat it up.
And talk about it.
And talk about it, and then instead of come back and you go, hey, how come you didn't put a hydration station in? Or how come you didn't paint the old bathrooms? So I appreciate what you're doing for us. Even though it could be painful for you.
It's all there.
And I guess I'll start it off too. I, I, I appreciate everything you did, this was amazing. I'm, I'm, I'm touched, frustrated, disappointed on like adding fill into the pit? I mean, that, that should have been a given to Boyer, or, or, you know, I mean, that, that thing's a hole. And I, I don't know how many yards of fill you're adding in there, but, or, or can we, or can we steal that one up?
Right, but I think, I think this came about because there, the diagram of the existing parking lot is going to expand, and that's where the fill's going to go, Amy, or no?
We, we were talking, that's why we bought that property, was to expand up into the...
Right, but I don't think it...
I think you called it the bowl, right?
The bowl.
So, and, and I understand there were some misses and different things, and there was people that are here, that are not here, that were in construction, and things got missed and, and put around, but a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar extra is a lot. And I remember hearing about that they discovered the drainage. Oh, wow, that, and I, I don't know if that was, I don't know.
Who would know that that's fill around here, that we could ask, hey, could you...
I mean, CCWED, CCWED is doing some big projects, can we ask them for some free fill?
It has to be engineered, we need to go shopping for fill. We are getting the fills locally. Um, I will tell you that some of the plans originally had been to grade around the sides and use that, and Geotek let us know that you cannot do that, because those sides are not such that you can use that, those sides and break it down for fill. So that was...
I guess, back to, I for the hydrant too. I, I think forty-three thousand dollars to go two hundred feet and throw a hydrant in, it is, is a lot of money, but if the dirt's open, if, if it's for fire, I'm, I'm forward right now on that.
Is that hydrant something you can get a, a grant for later? Where you're just thinking...
If you plumb it?
Yeah, if we plumb it.
I don't think the hydrant's the most expensive thing. I mean, that, what comes out of the ground is going to be...
It's the, it's the trenching.
Right, I mean, that, that's, that's the, that's the minimal cost of it.
So is there any, Amy, I, I, now you don't have a Crystal Wall, but Ted Follendorf owns that property next to ours now, correct? And that property is for sale?
One point seven million? It too could be, or one point three, I forget what it is.
But the plausibility of someone going in there and doing something with it, I mean, is it, you're a planning person. Is that possible to do something on that property?
It's always possible if you have enough money.
Okay, so...
It's going to be an expensive building.
Okay.
Is, another que, other question, Nate, real quick while I got you there.
Sure.
Is there a hydrant up on the road? Is there anything close by? Or did next closest one be up at like Craigan, or not Craigan now, O'Reilly?
Birmingham Church.
I believe there's a, um, there's a, I don't know which road you're driving, um, on Main Street.
On Main Street.
Yeah, there, there is hydrant along Main Street, yes.
Okay.
And there's one at Crystal, at Crystal.
Okay.
I think it's a...
And is there one, what's the big, where my sister lives, I can't remember, it comes out of the heart.
Crystal.
That is Crystal, okay.
So I'm sorry, for clarity, can you go back to the pretty map, I'm going to call it the colorful map, and kind of, Nate, can you talk about where the nearest hydrant is with relation to like, yeah?
Whoa, it's up here.
You mean, it's in the park? No, like, in the vicinity.
I don't think it's here, it's going on...
It's off.
It comes, it's, it comes down, there's right here. Simone Clements lives right here.
Yeah.
And if you come down the hill...
Trying to run a hose...
Their space on this side of Main Street.
There are somewhere that's...
Is that the dots?
I believe so, yeah.
Is it involved if we were to just decide one day, hey, let's tie into XYZ hydrant and pull another hydrant? Is it forty-three thousand dollars to do that?
To cut across the stairway, it would be...
Yeah.
Oh, do we still make a schedule?
Yeah. So, go back for one, I, I like this option, this option, I think for me lays out the best and uses, go back, and, and uses the property for what we actually bought that, that piece for. Move it all over the place. I think this uses that property that we got, and I think it makes the best use of it without getting rid of this chunk of space. Uh, it allows for the fire truck to turn around and do, um... Goes one more slide forward for me, option one. I think we have to do option one. I really don't like this number. I wish it wasn't that number, and I like the hydrant. Go to option two for me.
Amy, have you negotiated all that with Boyer, the option one, the fill and all that, the one twenty-nine portion? Have you, have you gone back and forth with them to try to make sure that there's room for shaving any? Is that something that's your role, or who does that, I don't know?
We sharpened our pencils several times on the budget they gave us, um, down to what's it cost per yard for fill. We, it is what it is on the cost for fill. It is what it is going to be to construct.
What is your role in that contractual part? Are you the head negotiator? Is it Chris O'Flynn that's involved in it with you? Because he's the numbers guy with regard to fill and...
It's me, and if, if Steve's present, we would do that. Um, what we have done is met on site to see what is actually necessary. But in terms of telling them a drinking fountain, I did the original, original wild guess as to what they would cost, so I had some inclination of what they've been to cost. Did I know that? So thirteen thousand dollars for two hydration stations, not shocked. The fact that it's going to be twenty-four or five, shocked, because I did not know that our irrigation water line and our kitchen water line were one in the same, and that they were going to have to do some major surgery to that, so...
And I, we have to have, and the drinking fountains got missed, and we have to have them. So I'm all for plumbing that into where we want to put them, but we need to explore some options on getting some hydration stations donated or something. And same with the EV charging station. If that's part of what we have to add for the grant, at this point, we need to put it in the ground and get stubbed to where we are while we got the dirt open, but I'm definitely for talking to Tesla or whoever and seeing it. But while the dirt's open, I hate not to...
We have to do all the infrastructure.
Put it in. You know, and stub up for the light poles, and if we can get P G N to take them, and, and, or, you know, to, to help us with it, or, or, I'm, I'm all for that, but then it just sits under the ground. And I don't think conduits going to cost thirty thousand dollars. And the fire access road, I mean, I'm not the fire guy, so Nate thinks we need it, and we can implement it into some already existing trails we have going. Instead of a ten foot, we make it twelve foot, so you can drive a fire truck up it, I'm, I'm all for that.
Can we go back to option one?
Sorry.
So, um, on the added fill, paving, drainage, remove bolt, so that, that includes, that includes the untangling of the kitchen water and the irrigation.
So here's when you're asking me if I've negotiated, why it's hard for me to answer, it's because some of the cost of untangling is in there. Some of the cost of untangling is designated to the hydrant. Some of the costs, they spread that cost over like four different line items, so...
So that's another issue, because then if I'm going to be like, yes, let's do the one twenty-nine, because we're going to get the added parking and move into that space, we're going to get the drainage and remove the bolt, and then they come back and say, oh, we can't completely untangle the kitchen line and the irrigation, that's going to be another cost, I'm going to freak out.
As, as would I, so basically, um, they gave me a more refined budget than you have, which actually loads that one a little heavier, so... So I would hope I would not have to come back to you. I'm not going to swear, but I feel pretty good that that's going to get that done. I would not swear, but I feel pretty good that that would get that done, based upon how many times we went back before.
Okay, Mike.
No, I think the hydrant, I'm okay with option one. And I think it's important to know that a lot of these dollars are going to come out of our enterprise fund. And that's an appropriate use of those dollars, which frees up the ARPA dollars. I think as I agree with Alvin, it's a lot easier to do it now than to do it later. So as much as the underground need get in, I'm not convinced Amy with option two. I don't think we've explored all of our options for cost savings there. And as much as I know you're trying and Steve is trying, you know, I'm wondering whether or not we should start to get into not to exceed numbers or something to lock them in. But that important fill, I know from school, you can't import fill unless it's tested and stuff, so I mean, that's a given. But they can use fill, Amy, they can use fill on site though there if they have any access there.
We can't take it off the wall.
You can't, you can't grade it.
Yeah, that was the problem because of the geotechnical issues. You can't use that soil that's on those cliffs for fill.
That soil?
Yeah. Yeah, that's why they're having to...
You can bring in import, you cannot use...
They have to use engineered for the stuff they bring in.
Well, it's an engineered soil that they have to use. I see, okay.
And that's probably tested and on, so.
Yeah, because I've had several people come by and go, oh, I could grade that flat with the dirt that's there.
So I mean, last meeting we talked about...
Is road base cheaper? I mean, $16 a ton, or something, you know what I mean?
I don't think the geotech people will go with road base for the fill.
I don't know if you can get the compaction out of it. I don't know.
I don't think you can, yeah.
I mean, you can factor R.
I don't think we can.
I don't know.
You have to be engineered fill and you have to be able to, and I think the road base is too large.
I don't know, I'm just thinking a ways, if it's $32 a ton for engineered and $16 for road base.
It's $29.50 per yard.
So Amy, last, last meeting we talked about the CME walls that's going to go up behind. So is there going to be some type of French drain behind that wall? And they're going to say it's going to be fine then?
They said it does not need one, that's what I was told by the engineer.
Is that in some kind of email that we can fall back on or anything?
It's in a set of plans that we get next week that will have an engineer stamped on it.
So I've had, and so now we're going to move on.
I have a verification question. So based on what you've said to me, obviously you presented a whole lot of options and things where we came about. But the most specific thing that we need to determine right now in order to not hold this project up is out of the safety of work, correct?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So besides that, is there anything else in these options that can come back to us after there's further...
Everything except this.
Okay, so can you go to option two page for us? You can explore all of these, and the ground is open, and you can, you won't hold anything up by not stubbing things up and doing anything on this?
I'll verify that with them. They may... If it does, it's not going to be more than like a week or two between meetings. And I say that because right now they're planning on doing all the fill work and extension. That's going to take quite a while. It's when they start messing with the existing repaving, the existing parking lot, that we need to worry about the ground being open for that EV charging station. Drinking fountains or further down the line. So I have some time for those.
Everything on this page, which are obligations as part of the grant, come 8/20/28 or whatever year we have.
But this one they don't go on unless I give an answer.
My other question is, these numbers here, so they're around $43,000, were sure that that's what it is? Or is that like a ballpark and we're thinking it's not going to be more than that?
We will ask, this will be a fixed for them. If we do a task order for them, we're going to hold them to a fixed amount for that.
And they gave us this number?
They gave us this number, yeah.
And you have, as the project manager, you have something that itemizes what's involved in that $43,000 more than just hydrant listed as optional? I mean, you have, you know that it involves the relocating of the water lines and the extension of the water lines and the untangling of what's out there?
I will get that in writing. They verbally told me that. They don't have that listed on the list. But I can have them detail that in the work.
Yeah, like the not to exceed...
The contractual portion of it makes me nervous.
Right, the not to exceed $43,000.
And knowing what you get, because you're doing a lump sum $43,000 to get something, hoping it's what you want, and it's a little shaky. Especially when we're already unraveling a contract that was not okay.
So, but on the hydrant, it doesn't say like 143 feet with six inch pipe?
Yeah.
Two 90s, a 45, and a cap or anything like that?
They did that on their side on a, when they came up with their amount. And then they give it to us, and then when they come back with the actual detailed plans, that's when we get all that level of detail.
So I know this is a design build, which is completely unusual, but in a standard contract, there would be an inspector out there that not only negotiates that, but talks change order talk and itemizes the change order, and then inspects and make sure that we get what we paid for. And that we get the 43 feet of this and the couplers and the things. Who's doing that on this project?
Okay, so the contract was not set up that way, and I will defer to Steve to, do you want to tackle that one?
Because we're getting into the mini treaty on the project, and I certainly hope we know.
About who's going to do the inspections?
That's at that level of education. I mentioned Chris's name earlier because he is our public works and he might understand the majority of this type of construction, even though it's a design build. Somebody, no offense, but somebody other than our planner.
Yeah, I would think that that would be our inspector, our city inspector or the new position. Is the question, who's going to inspect to make sure that we get what we are paying for?
In addition to, that would be the person that would be negotiating the change order and making sure that it is all encompassing of all the things that are important for $43,000. It would be that extra level of detail.
Yeah, we're at the point with Boyer now where up until now, there hasn't been a, an agreed upon set price. It's been, this is what we believe that we will be able to produce for you, but we don't even have a plan for it yet. That's the design bill. So my understanding is as we are getting to this point, as they're starting to design these things, I think within the next month, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, we should have a, an actual written budget from them. We're very close to that point at our last meeting.
I feel we have the written budget from them. What we don't have are the detailed plans to approve based upon, again, it's this weird design build to go back and forth with what you can afford, pulling back on what you can't afford. And then they build the plans up for it.
I try again?
No, we have Caroline. Amy, look, write notes down.
I, it's okay, I'm not that old.
No, so I just wanted to circle back a little bit. I do think, I do appreciate how you also come about to help back fill some of the funding that's needed, and I hadn't really thought about it until Mike brought it up with enterprise funds. And we do have a lot of money in enterprise funds, and it's just sitting there. It was collected to be used for things like that. And so that, actually, I was thinking about that, and that is an appropriate use for those funds. So I appreciate you going in and trying to see where you can pull those funds from. So I do think that the hydrant is, I think it's a good idea to have down there, especially having, you know, lived through that O'Reilly fire and how close it got to everybody, having that additional hydrant there is always helpful. So, but I'm just very, I just am very, very concerned about future asks of where we're coming up. Especially, and so the capital enterprise fund, the $80,000, that includes probably some of that in the 129?
The, yes.
Yeah, so that's going to be towards the, like the water untangling?
45,000 of it is the drainage and untangling some of the water issue, whereas the hydrant is the other, another component of that. So yeah, so we have 45 and then the 43. 45 is all drainage, the 43 is all hydrant.
So in an effort to move forward tonight, I think we need to consider what we're moving forward on and everything else to be coming to us in a future meeting, but also we need to identify how we want the budget adjustment to reflect. So let's think about that when we're gathering our thoughts. Mike, you're up, go ahead.
Let's go back to option number two for a minute, and I want to tag on to what Alvin said. To make sure, because part of that $30,000 for the light poles, I would assume is that, are the light poles in the underground? So if we're saying we want, no?
No. They actually have lighting as a separate line item. This is just for the poles.
Just the poles?
So we're getting lights right now. It's just not the lights that Amy wants them to match. Those are an additional 30. So we're going to get lights.
This is a fancy light.
Okay, so...
Oh, so this is...
It's not, it's not a grant required.
It's not a grant required. We're getting lights.
So yeah, I shouldn't have put that as a grant required, but I didn't know what clever to put there instead.
Okay, so we can wait on that. I mean, that's, putting a light pole in is...
Way different than...
Is way different than the underground, okay. So we can wait a few months till P G N E's...
Do we have the drinking stations covered?
With the underground?
With the underground, or is that having to be addressed in option two?
I will double check that again, given where I think those are going and where we need to do the expansion. I do not believe so. I can confirm that.
You don't think with the hydrant...
I think the drinking fountain, we can't pop up a EV or being a drinking station somehow?
No, no, what I'm saying is I, okay, let me put this a different way. I don't think there is going to be a drinking fountain out past the end of where the parking lot ends right now. I think there's going to be one probably, I'm going to, this is a wild guess, somewhere over near the pavilion and the kitchen, and then one over near the playground. And so because all the construction we're talking about mainly is from where that parking lot ends going north, I don't see why there should be an issue. But that's just me using planner's logic.
Go back to that one. But I mean, we're assuming there's going to be a hydration station someplace close to the restrooms or playground, correct?
Yes.
And that's already plumbed?
Or already included to be plumbed with the current plans or contract or whatever we're going.
Tag on to what Alvin is saying, make sure we get our underground in for the location.
That underground is not in yet for the drinking fountain because they have not been able to, again, it's the untangle thing. We've got irrigation systems going to our drinking fountain right now. We don't want an irrigation system being our drinking fountain. We want a different water line. So that's part of why that cost is up.
But, but it will be there, at least stubbed in for a drinking fountain?
Yes.
And that price has been included?
No, that, part of that price is, that's the issue. Part of that price is included in the untangling and all that underground.
All of this, all of that.
And then part of it is in that hydration station. See, that hydration station is 24/5 because part of it's going to require doing new plumbing.
Freshwater plumbing, because everything down there is irrigation water.
Because everything down there is irrigation water.
But then that could, all the plumbing, are we, all the plumbing can be charged to the enterprise fund? Is that the way you calculated it now?
No, I did not include the drinking fountains in the enterprise fund.
Which could.
I could include it all except for the 13 probably, the 13 that actually buys them. Or I guess, I don't know, maybe we could. I'd have to check.
As far as the hydrant goes, I know nothing about this, so excuse my ignorance.
All right.
But in terms of hydrants and pressure and all of those things, has Chris been brought into the works on that part of it? Because we are going to move forward with the hydrant. I just want to make sure that we're not going to have to come back and be like, oh, hey, guess what? We don't have enough to do.
Water or pressure.
We already spent almost an hour on this.
The hydrants that are down there have adequate volume and pressure. So extending it another, I don't have the numbers exactly, but like 250 feet, you know, six inch, you're going to see virtually no friction loss in six inch pipe.
The hydrant's tying into irrigation, correct? It doesn't need fresh, a fire hydrant?
Our hydrant is same as our drinking water supply. That feeds, it feeds everything, drinking water, hydrants.
You can't have a fire hydrant be pulled off of what's already down there with the, which is the irrigation lines?
Actually, the irrigation lines, so when it gets redone, the kitchen's going to have fresh water, so, right. So then that will go to the hydrant.
Well, why couldn't you just tap into the already existing, I'm asking a stupid question, I know, but why, why, why does it need to be fresh water for a fire hydrant?
That's all we have.
No, there's, there's all, everything.
It's domestic water. We water our lawn down there with drinking water. There's no, there's no...
Irrigation water.
Right, they're just calling it irrigation water.
All the waters run through the same pipe, so if you run a four inch, you stub a four inch pipe in, and you're running domestic and you're running irrigation.
It's all, it's all...
It's all trees.
It was called irrigation because it's watering the lawn and the trees.
I might leave the assumption that it's like recycled.
I have one more weird question on this one. Why were we not separating this all to begin with when we started? Why were we not, hey, let's, irrigation is irrigation and...
You don't have the backflow of the lights down there, sure.
I mean, just abandon all the old, and then you come across and rip it out. You put a new irrigation, you put a new drinking water, kitchen water at that same time.
That's what we're trying to do now, yeah.
Okay, so that wasn't incorporated though. We were just going to use whatever irrigation was there. I'm confused about the untangling, because I assumed it would just be untangled when they ripped it all out and then went back in with new.
Untangling means correct the situation. It doesn't literally mean that.
No, I know, I'm just saying, because the one drinking fountain was probably off the irrigation line.
Of course.
I get that. And you don't want something siphoning back and doing weird things. And I get, I get.
Backflow.
Right. But that wasn't included in the cost either of new irrigation and new drinking systems throughout, I mean, the original bit of the water.
No, because we didn't know it was a problem, so we did the original. Yeah, this is one of those Mr. Wayne things. You start digging and it's like, oh.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to try, yes, we've chatted enough, unless you have a great question?
I have, of course, everything I said. No, I just, you know, I just find it interesting, and you know, we can, we can beat up the process. I think holding accountability and making sure that we stay within budget, but you know, we're too far down the road right now. That playground looks fantastic. We need to move forward and finish the project. But I think we've learned some lessons in this process too, Amy, about what we do in the future. And again, so that's, that's my ending topic. So do you want to motion on the option?
Well, I think we need to move forward on, on the options and then your funding, like how, if someone were to make a motion on option one for the 172, I'm just throwing out an option. We need to make sure we know how we want that funded. Because there's a lot of...
I'll make a, I'll make a motion, but we go back to that slide.
I just want to make sure that this budget, her budget adjustment gets incorporated in on your motion, okay? So we don't have to bring it back again.
Right.
It's treated too long.
Yeah, so PowerPoints, I know you guys... Yeah, you guys normally want PowerPoints included in the packet. You should just give them to you today.
That's fine, but we get it.
Yeah. Okay, Alvin, you're up.
Okay. Make sure, Amy, this has to happen so we do not postpone.
Correct.
Go to option two for me for one sec. None of this has to happen today, right? Because...
That is, that is my understanding. I'm looking at that fire access road and thinking of where they're working, and I'm hoping that doesn't get included.
Okay, can, in my motion, can I say any underground or dirt moving that has to happen with this could happen? I mean, that's, we're getting there, we're going to adjust the budget, so how?
So the only undergrounding... So the only undergrounding that they, so the work that is most crucial is occurring north of the existing parking area. So anything north of the existing parking area, which includes option one, may or may not include the fire access road.
'Cause these, this is a grant requirement. We have to have this fire access road?
Yes, but it doesn't say in what form we have to have it.
Right, but we have to have it, right. Light poles, we don't have to have, 'cause we already have existing. The E V charging, we have to have.
Have to have.
But we're gonna explore options.
Yep. And the drinking fountain, we have to have.
We're gonna explore options. And we'll explore options.
Okay. So if I make an, if I make a motion for option one in its totality, and an option two for drinking fountain, E V, and fire access road, would that delay anything?
No. No.
I just don't wanna delay things either.
No.
I'm looking at you guys for adding to my motion here.
You're taking out the, the light poles.
'Cause we don't have to have them yet. These were just for the light poles, right?
But also, are we wanting her to come back with it?
We want, I want you to come back, so I don't...
She's, she's gonna, she's gonna be able to reach out. This could come back to us in two weeks in a different format, because she's gonna have more research done, more opportunities, and potentially maybe an answer on the fire access road and the lights and clearings.
But I don't wanna hold up, do...
She said we won't hold up.
I know, but...
Fire, but the fire access road, we didn't even include in the motion.
Maybe the fire access.
Yeah, because it's actually an option one, isn't it? On those. No.
Yeah.
So because that is also gonna become part of the park course, and that's something that, we don't have any other options except to cut that road yet.
Okay, okay, then that's, then I go option one and it's in, in the total, and fire access road off option one.
There you go.
Ready to get it?
I have a motion.
I have a motion. It's option one.
And we have a second. Wait, wait, uh, if you amend your motion to include your funding source.
Yes.
And, okay. Flipping it back, so I get to meet up.
From...
Option one. Our funding source for option one is capital enterprise eighty-eight thousand, right?
Yes.
And ARPA would be eighty-four-one forty-five.
Right. Then there's ten thousand five hundred for the...
An additional ARPA.
An additional ARPA.
Of ten thousand.
Of ten thousand five hundred for access fire road.
What?
Is that... That specifies where, okay.
Do we have to dip into ARPA? Or do you wanna go into that? Or can we just do the enterprise fund?
No.
No.
Hold on to the fire road.
But, may I ask a question?
Hold, you have a motion on the floor.
In a second, in a second, and I, I...
He amended his motion, are you...
So the op, the motion is for option one in its entirety, and the fire access road from option two, eighty-eight thousand from enterprise, eighty-four-one forty-five from ARPA, with an additional ten thousand five hundred from ARPA. That's the amendment.
For the fire road, yes.
So, so Amy, the access road, have, have, has Royer given us a, a quote to put, to put in that park course road yet? Is that included in any part of this contract?
Yeah, everything's been included, um, in this whole presentation. Everything's been included. These are the exceptions on these four options.
So when, when you say that, the ten thousand five hundred dollars is, so that's, if we incorporate this fire road as part of the park course, we could save ten thousand bucks, correct?
No.
Okay.
Because the surfacing on the fire road is gonna be different than the surfacing on the park course, those, hold on, I'll show you this.
I'll leave you driving.
There we go. So the surfacing on the fire road, which may in fact be part of the park course, right here, is gonna have one type of surfacing. This will all have a different type of surfacing.
So is a difference, is that the ten thousand five hundred, is it different surface?
This is, yeah, so this is a ten thousand five hundred and binding the route through here.
Right, so, but it's the surfacing.
It's the surfacing.
It's not the cutting and grading. It's just the surfacing.
There is some cutting and grading, but there's not a lot, because our sewer line is really...
Okay, okay. So the ten thousand five hundred, okay, that makes sense.
Okay, so Mike, we, Alvin amended his motion. Are you second to me?
Yes.
Are you in agreement with the change? So we have a motion and a second discussion before we go to roll call those. I guess my only question is, do we, where did the eighty-eight thousand from enterprise fund come from?
Forty-five thousand dollars for all the drainage and forty-three thousand dollars for the hydrant.
So the forty-three is coming out of the one-twenty-something?
It's coming out of the eighty-eight. So the...
No, I'm sorry, so when I look for option one for a second, please, of course. So when I look at that, and I see a hundred and twenty-nine, one forty-five, and then forty-three, and I see eighty-eight, we're saying that that eighty-eight is comprised of forty-three thousand for the hydrant, and then the additional...
Forty-five out of the one-twenty-nine, one forty-five.
Because that's what qualifies out of that one.
What is it that makes it qualify? I guess I'm stuck on that.
The drainage.
It's just the fact that...
It's infrastructure that we have to maintain and that's already there, and we're upgrading it, maintaining it.
It's like good water lines, like we're doing at Blue Sher.
So we already have a drainage out there.
Okay.
And we already have...
So you do have an itemized something somewhere to have arrived at that?
Yes, they do. It's just when they gave us, that, what I'm telling you is, they gave me a penciled version of all of the quotes they got and put together.
Okay, so if this is the way that the, that the park is gonna go, please bring itemized, uh, I know this is a difficult effort, but I'm, I'm visual and I need to see itemized. So for, in the future, if we can get breakdowns that are, that are a little bit clearer than perception, and I'm gonna leave it at that.
Gotcha.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Rose?
Shemante.
Hi.
Broli.
Hi.
Monkata.
Hi.
Hernan.
Hi.
Sharada.
Hi.
Okay, we are going to take a five-minute break, and we'll come out, uh, at seven forty-five.
Steve.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on. We are on item, uh, E, which is to approve resolution twenty-four dash five-nine, which is the City of Angels Annexation Policy, E.
Mayor and council members, um, we have long had in our general plan a requirement to have guidelines for annexations, and we wanna have them in advance of having an annexation, instead of just looking at a specific property and saying, oh, now let's decide what we wanna do for annexations. One. Two, the municipal services review is currently being updated through LAPCO, and that is in anticipation of us potentially doing some annexations. For example, the property we bought off Finnegan, did you know we have to pay property taxes on that? Yes, we do, because it's not in city limits. So that's one practical reason for getting this done. Basically, um, it's pretty straightforward. It was taken straight out of the general plan, the language. Um, the planning commission did review it. They found it to be very basic, and they had no changes to propose. It's on pages eighty-one and eighty-two are all the details, and it takes in transportation corridors, places we might need, infrastructure, um, land providing housing opportunities, city-owned land, um, land within our sphere of influence where our police and fire are the first responders usually. Things that, um, major intersections, like Ballastino Road and State Route Four, not in the city limits. Most people think it is, but it's not. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but this is basically to have a policy in place that you're comfortable with, that's broad enough, that will give us some guidance for annexations.
Did you mean that, Mary?
Um, I have that up there, just in case you have questions about any specific properties. You can see one that's got a, a little pin in it that actually is across from the high school. Every single piece of high school property is in the city limits, except for that one.
What is that?
Where is that?
Is that the X Center?
That's the, that's the new X Center.
That's the X Center.
Yeah.
It's in the camp.
Really?
Yep.
It goes the highway.
Yep.
Probably the great building.
Yep, and then there's the one that's north of, between Finnegan Lane and all of our city property down at the waste of our treatment plant. It's in McKevy. So there's stuff like that sort of scattered around and things like that, as well as up at the intersection of Ballastino and Four. Once you get past Foothill, it's in McKevy. Yep. So happy to answer any questions?
Questions? Public comment? Any questions or public comment on this item? Okay, seeing that, we'll bring you back to council. Um, any final questions or conversation before we ask for a motion?
I just, you know...
Got one?
I only have one cup, though. You know what, I appreciate, this is, I, I think it's important for us to have those guidelines out, so that when we have to look at annexation, we have a, we have something to, to look at, the piece of property compared to what we're saying we need. And I would assume that is done by planning and you, and you, Amy, then? If someone requests a piece of property to be annexed, or how is that?
It can be a private request, it can be a public request, it can be a direction from city council.
Okay.
And then you go through LAPCO process to do it.
Okay.
Uh, E, have you, is this something, once we have an annexation policy, is that something that you provide to LAPCO in the MSR that they're doing, or is it something that's requested?
It's something you will look at in passing a resolution before we would go to LAPCO. And I did forget to add that this did receive review by legal, so it's been, it's not through legal review.
Good.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll be looking for a motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash five-nine.
Submit.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Great.
Shemante.
Hi.
Broli.
Hi.
Monkata.
Hi.
Hernan.
Hi.
Sharada.
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you. Item F is to rescind resolution twenty-four dash five-zero, which is the amendment to the standard agreement issued under the twenty-twenty Community Development Block Grants Program for Run Virus Response, C D B G, C B, accepting an additional sixty-six thousand three hundred fifty-five, and then replace it with the following resolutions. Resolution twenty-four dash six-four, approving an amendment to the standard agreement twenty dash C D B G dash C B one dash zero zero one six, and resolution twenty-four dash six-five, approving an amendment to the standard agreement, C D B G C B two slash three zero zero two four seven. E.
Mayor, council members, this has come to you more times than I care to repeat. Um, we had a meeting with them, and in order to close out the grant, we needed to come to you one more time, because we listed something in the wrong column, blah, blah, blah. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, but this is so that we can get these taken care of, we can get our additional funding and sixty-six three fifty-five.
So nothing changes? It's really just a clerical?
It's clerical.
Okay.
It's a big old clerical.
Public comment? No public comment on this item, bringing it back to council for questions, conversations, or a motion?
I'll make a motion on resolution twenty-four fifty.
And?
So it's twenty-four sixty-four.
Twenty-four sixty-four.
And twenty-four sixty-five.
And twenty-four sixty-five.
And rescinding twenty-four forty.
And rescinding twenty-four fifty. So resolution, yeah.
Yeah, the second on the motion, Rose.
Ooh, second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's about...
It's about that.
Okay, Shemante.
Hi.
Broli.
Hi.
Monkata.
Hi.
Hernan.
Hi.
Sharada.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item eleven is our administration report. Just a seat.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight seemed to be the Amy planner night, so I do wanna thank Amy. She is, she does a lot of work, and something that she didn't mention was, um, out at the park, there was an issue with the fence, and she jumped right on it, got unbelievable cooperation from Caltrans that got us to a point where we can immediately deal with a safety situation that otherwise would have taken us months to do. So that coupled with all of the other things that she does, I just wanna say thank you, Amy, for everything that you do. I have been here now for about six or seven weeks, I'm still getting my feet under me and getting, um, all of the projects and priorities aligned with what needs to be done and in the order that they need to be done, but I do wanna thank all of the staff. They've been great getting me up to speed and, um, trying to get out there and make myself available to the public. We had school start and dealing with all of the issues that come along with school starting. So, other than that, I have no other report. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Item twelve is council report. Carolyn, you wanna start?
Sure, I attended C O G, uh, right after our last meeting. Um, Caltrans reported that they're doing trash removal on State Highway forty-nine. Funding opportunities, about fifty-one point four million in transportation grants and, um, for climate resilience. And then federal, they have Safe Streets for All. Uh, the deadline is August twenty-ninth, it's one point two billion. And then the charging and fuel grants, the E V chargers is one point three billion, and it's due August twenty-ninth as well. C T A, the Caliber's Transit, um, so Caliber's High has, uh, no busing, they have like, a CTA, the Calaveras Transit, so Calaveras High has no busing, they have like, a bunch of their busing are cut, so they are now transporting a hundred and sixteen high school students.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
On public transportation.
On public transportation. They're making it work. It's pretty amazing. And then, they also reported that they, the Area Twelve on Beijing, they got together with all the hospitals, like Sutter, Adventist, MACT, Mark Twain, and they're trying to come up with a plan on helping our seniors get to their appointments and get to like outpatient stuff and things like that. So, they brought in our CTA to try to work on how they can help on that too, so, pretty amazing. We've got a pretty big report on wagon trail. There's been some start and stops going on there. You'll see with regards to the wall that they're putting up, and when they got in there, they found more artifacts, so that was part of it. So two-thirds of it is being worked on, and a third is on repgrade, so, yeah, so that's what I have. And Amanda, her baby.
Where are you going?
Some fat you.
I don't know.
That one.
That one.
Mike, any other report? No one else has a, I have to go for Alvin.
Not a report, other than Nate, Sam is an audio/video guru genius, Amy, Rose, Steve, Chris, Michelle, everybody. I don't know, it's just, I was like, say thank you to everybody. This city's a major place to live, and everybody makes the wheels go around with us, so, thank you all.
Shemante.
So the only thing I have is that on August sixteenth, I observed the Mark Twain new drop-off in the morning, and I want to thank Jody, and she's not here, and Chief for allowing Jody to be out there. She's a croup to watch. Oh, wait, I'm going to be there, brother, next stop sign! But, I, you know, we originally, and I'm glad we didn't, we originally were going to put no parking along Stanislaw's, I mean, San Joaquin during, and I'm glad we didn't because it allows parents to stop, but having the parents come out of that parking lot, dropping their students off, and they get a right-hand turn, the flow is good. I had an opportunity to pick up after school for two days, and it's not as painful as it seems to be. And I know Louise is working with staff and with parents, if they have multiple age students, to find a place to keep the youngers, so that the parent only has to come through once. And I, Steve, I heard more than one person compliment you for being out there, and watching and observing, and I appreciate the time that you've spent introducing yourself to lots of folks, and especially the two superintendents, and Louise, I think, has a good handle on it, and I think she's going to make some adjustments as time goes by, but it's a heck of a lot better, especially with the four stop, with the additional two stop signs.
Okay, we have correspondence. There's two items under correspondence, a letter that was signed for Brian Stevens, and then our update from August, from Steve. Any comments or questions on correspondence?
I did present that letter on behalf of you, Mayor.
Oh, you did show up. Very good. How was that?
It went very well. It went very well. There were like four million Boy Scouts, I think, but I mean, that's some outrageous number, but only two percent of them are Eagle Scouts. I mean, so it's a pretty prestigious honor, you know, so...
Was the paper, did the paper cover it? It was already in the paper, wasn't it?
It was in the paper.
Okay, yeah, good. Okay, item fourteen, Rose, is our calendar, and it looks like she does have it up on the screen for us.
The only thing I am missing is on the twenty-eighth, we have a three PM meeting here to go... Yeah, water rate study.
Have invites gone out, or, but it is, you know, who do you want with it? She just lands on my calendar if there's an invite that can go off of it.
Oh, okay.
So it's for sure three o'clock on the twenty-eighth.
Yep.
Perfect.
So there's your August. TAC is the one that Steve mentioned he's going to for the EV, that's on that TAC. The IRWMA is the other one that Caroline referenced tonight, where we can potentially get some grants for the hydration stations, and usually that's Steve or Chris that attends. I did add Burke. Burke is on the twenty-second. I think it's at three o'clock.
It's the twenty-second.
And I emailed it to you all as well.
Three o'clock.
Yeah.
And all of those, that's all software demo, then? Some of those?
We didn't have the central square demo. We did have the Tyler demo up here. We are on Thursday having the AccuFund demo, and then we are going to potentially be bringing forward who we choose to talk to.
And when do you anticipate that coming to us?
We're hoping the week. Me and Michelle have a timeline. We really want to get this situated and moving forward with, once we pick who we want, so we're hoping by the third, if not, it'll be the seventeenth.
Did the central SQ demo get rescheduled, or are you...
No, they, Michelle reached out to them. So originally, when we did reach out to them, we're too small of an agency for them, but then they reached back out to her because they have a smaller version that they could offer to us, but they haven't come out with it. They wanted us to be like the test dummy, so, yeah. So, of course, Labor Day on Monday, the second, our council meeting on the third, here September. If you need me to add anything to it, let me know, I definitely can.
Alvin, can you put the twenty-fourth of September on your calendar for me, please?
Yes.
I'll be out of town. Okay, good.
They're all hazards, Amy. None of them.
Item fifteen, future agenda items. Steve.
So I will be bringing job descriptions for council to consider updating, just to make sure that we're up to speed and in compliance with all the new laws. They're getting legal review, they're going through the unions that would be affected by them. Specifically, the fire department will be the first set of job descriptions that are brought before you. There will be an agreement on either the third or the seventeenth of September to allow a new business in town to be able to use the restroom facilities at Pickle Porch.
The one?
The which one? The live scan. Part of what we intend to update is our recruitment, selection, retention efforts citywide for our employees, and one of the things that I would like to bring forward is a request for live scan services for all new employees, so that we get a criminal history check that is a little more comprehensive, we get subsequent arrest notifications, so that if an existing employee is arrested for some reason, we get a notification of that, and in order to facilitate that, the council has to adopt a resolution approving this effort that then goes to DOJ that would allow us to have access to live scan facilities, and that's fingerprint, right? And...
Martin and the new one.
Martin and the new one, thank you. My notepad, thank you very much. So, the museum has been, let's see, the MAC museum has approached the museum downtown saying that there are certain artifacts that our museum has, the downtown museum, that when the MAC opens their museum, they would like to have some of those artifacts because it's related...
Their new ones.
To them. So, I suggested to Martin, who approached me with this, the CEO of the downtown museum, that he create a list of these items that would benefit the new museum along with any known values of those items, and I will bring that to you so that we memorialize the transfer of the city-owned property that's at that museum to the new museum, so I expect that to happen sometime in September, just as a way to keep track of the things that we're transferring from our possession and basically donating them to the new museum.
So, Steve, who currently does our fingerprinting? The county office of education, or you send them down to the sheriffs? Where do they go, or are we not?
Yeah, police officers are required by law...
Right. But we're not doing our employees.
...to go through different level of background investigation, so I would propose that we implement live scanning for all of our employees.
Okay, and my other question is, are you updating the essential job functions, or does our JPA do that? Are they reviewing our job descriptions too, Rose?
No.
Yeah, the main...
It's our insurance.
The arming.
I just call it JPA.
Sorry, I was like, wait.
The main reason for the job description updates is because of the effort in the fire department that we're looking at, the different duties and different positions, and because of Measure A, I felt it was necessary, if we're going to look at a job description in the fire department, let's look at all of it and update all of the job descriptions all at once, all of the fire department job descriptions.
And who, is it we do our own self-review, or do you send those out, or?
So, I did the initial update and then sent them to legal, so legal has had a review of all the job descriptions. Deb, anything to add to that?
Looks muted or something.
You're muted.
We can't hear you.
Oh.
Oh.
All right, Anne.
There you are.
No, they look, they look really, really good. One of the main issues that we have with lines on those are the descriptions of the physical requirements of the job, which are important when you're looking at EV accommodations, and these are very detailed, and they're good.
So after the legal review, they've then gone to the union for their consideration because it affects the employees, so I wanted to get their input on it, so after the union's reviewed, then I will bring them to you for consideration. And they are not major changes, they're updating, there was existing language in the current job descriptions of certifications that are required that don't even exist anymore, it's that type of cleanup. It's not a complete revision of the job descriptions, it's more of a cleanup.
We anticipate having an update on negotiations at the next meeting?
We anticipate an updating closed session at the September three meeting.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions? It's not...
Wait, wait, I just, I just have to play it. What? I just...
No more coffee for you after coffee.
We talked a while ago, Steve, just a discussion only, about master plans for the city, I mean, and we, and just, yeah, where are we with the personnel handbook and the council handbook?
So I do have an update on that, so, our ERMA, so employer RMA, we just were notified that we have a refund that can come back to us, so I requested a check. The check is four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and I believe Deb said that it would run about five thousand dollars to have our personnel policies rewritten, so I talked to Michelle, we want to earmark that money to go towards that, and then I can also submit to get another twenty-five hundred dollars reimbursed.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Good job.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, and then, Mike, for your question, the personnel handbook is going to be updated. We're still identifying things as we go through negotiations, I think, and so that's something that we have to meet and confirm, meet and consult with MMBAs, same thing, with the unions on it. So, we'll be cleaning all that up when we've notified the unions that we're going to be doing that to.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I think we're looking for a motion for a German. Motion, and a second.
Shemante.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Moncada.
Aye.
Hernan.
Aye.
Sharada.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Deb.
Bye, Debbie.
Bye, thank you. And you roll call.